At this time, I'll ask the Mr. Jones if he would have our implications. A pledge to reply.
Let's bow our heads and pray, give it to the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and the many blessings you bestow upon us. Lord, please take care of our military men and women and their families while they're away, defending this great nation and protect them from harm's way and return them safely to their loved ones. Lord, please bless our county employees to help make Green County a better place to live and work. Dear God, we look to you tonight to guide us in the business presented to the Commissioners this evening and provide us with the knowledge and wisdom to help make the best decisions for all the citizens in Green County. Lord, we ask to all these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Fellow Commissioners, you do have a proposed revised agenda. It includes Section F, which is a presentation by Sharon Harrison on the Governor's Volunteer Service Awards. That has been added to the agenda. Is there a need for any other change, addition or deletion to or from the agenda?
Seeing no change, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so per se. Aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. We also have in our packets the proposed consent agenda for tonight. Is there a need for any change, addition, deletion, modification to anything or pulling anything on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so per se. Aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. At this time, I'll call our tax assessor to come forward, Ms. Wiggins, for the Board of Equalization Review. And I will open the Board of Equalization and Review at this time. Good evening.
At this time, I'm administer the oath of office. If you will affirm at the end by saying, "I do," and then sign and date it and give it to Kathy at the end of the meeting. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Green County, North Carolina, and that I will not allow my actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help me God.
Good. Thank you.
As of today, there have been no formal requests. Haven't received any appeals for real property. At this time, I contain any concerns of no yet. Hearing none, I recommend recess of the 2023 Board of Equalization and Review until Monday, May 1st at 10:00 a.m.
We will recess until Monday, May 1st at 10:00 a.m. Thank you. For the Board of Equalization and Review, just to make clear. Do we have anyone for public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Harrison.
I'd like for Tyler and Sarah to come forward now. Thank you for adjusting your agenda.
Yes, ma'am. My apologies. No problems.
With the Governor's Volunteer Service Award, we have our recipients Salvador Tenoco and Tyler Carter. And we had our reception earlier at the Senior Center. And the individuals that submitted their names for nomination were part of that ceremony. Tyler Carter was nominated in the areas of individual disaster and lifetime achievement. He was nominated by Derek Burris and Sean McMillan Jones, members of Fort Run Volunteer Fire and EMS, for outstanding work ethic, positive attitude towards fellow firefighters, years of service, and that's been since 2008, and averaging over 250 hours per year of service to the citizens in his community. Tyler currently serves as the department's fire captain and emergency medical technician. Our other recipient is Salvador Tenoco. He was nominated in the areas of individual, cultural, environmental, and historically underserved populations. Salvador was nominated by town of Snow Hill residents Carolyn Newcomb and Laura Warren Exum for beautification projects where he donated time, talent, and resources in cleaning and landscaping the park on Fourth Street, as well as several other abandoned properties in the town of Snow Hill. At this time, I would like for the board to recognize their contributions as volunteers for Green County.
And I would like to say on behalf of the board, thank you so much. Congratulations and thank you so much to each of you for what you have done for the community, for Green County. We thank you so very much.
Can we have a picture?
Yes, absolutely.
Just let them stand right back of the...
Same way?
Behind us and in front of us. I don't care. Wherever they will be, it should be fine.
Ready? Thank you very much. I did want to say that work being done now will be used for nominations for next year. And so by the end of this year, a packet will go out for 2024. So if you have anyone in mind that you would like to nominate, be thinking about it and let me know. Thank you very much.
And I would like to say also, thank you to all of our volunteers. It's great that our two volunteers tonight got recognized at the state level. But all of our volunteers use their time, energy, effort, resources to help the communities in which they live. Even most recently, the young Eagle man who was going to try to be an Eagle Scout, the volunteers went and completed his task. And so our volunteers across this county, we are a small rural county. But you know, we won, I think it's a blessing that we almost all know each other. We greet each other on the street. We are a friendly community. And I'm very proud to be from Green County. And I am proud of what all of our volunteers bring to this county. It's great. Thank you. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. I'll echo that. We are very appreciative of our volunteers. My first item for action this evening is a letter of intent for Foundation Forward. If you recall, that's the charters of freedoms that we are working with the museum to construct. The letter of intent is basically our last administrative step in our agreement with Foundations Forward before we actually begin the construction. I hope you've had an opportunity to read it, to understand our obligation, their obligation, et cetera. Are there any questions?
Where do you think it is to start?
I'm here in fall of 2023.
Hopefully the fall will...
It's so.
Yes, sir.
That's right around the corner.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this letter of intent for the Foundation Charters Freedom.
Have a motion and a second to approve this letter of intent. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so per se. Aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. My next item for action is a budget amendment for the Emergency Management Department requesting additional funding to purchase road signs. We've got a lot of road signs down. I'm going to give the opportunity for the Emergency Management Crew to purchase these and get them up for our emergency response. Are there questions?
Where do we have to get these signed from?
I believe we get them from the Lewisburg State Penitentiary is where they're made.
Okay. If you get a pool of time there, can we get a discount?
Absolutely. Whatever I can do to help, sir.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Any further discussion, elegant to say, we sure do lose an awful lot of road signs. And it can be an inhibiting factor for someone when they're trying to get to a destination and the road sign's gone.
Most people know where the roads are.
Most people know.
People traveling through the county would have a time.
Trying to find somewhere. That's right.
And you'd have a time.
Our local fire departments, our local serious department, our highway patrol, our local first responders know the roads by name, regardless of sign. But like Mr. Jones said, if you're not from here, it can be a problem.
Well, this has been an ongoing battle. And I think we're going to take some different strategies in making sure that they stay where they're supposed to stay.
Good deal. Good deal. Have a motion and a second. Here are none of further discussion. Those in favor the motion signify so per se. Aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
You may now unseat.
Our next item for action is a resolution of intention to close or abandon unimproved roadways. There are two streets in the Maury Ballpark area that were planned but never improved or opened. These streets, Fourth Street and School Street, need to be formally abandoned by the Board of Commissioners. We need to allow the public and the neighbors to say or have a say in the closing of those streets. And I believe we have to wait three weeks. Is that correct?
We need to run an advertisement in the paper for three consecutive weeks prior to the public hearing.
Okay.
Have a public hearing, receive all public comment to close the streets. And then we can move forward with our design process for our desired EMS station.
Do we need to approve this resolution tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, if we got to wait through it. All right. Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. A motion to approve the resolution. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so per se. Aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We will advertise in three consecutive weeks and then we'll have a public hearing.
From May. Is starting this Saturday?
It will have to be the next Saturday if we get it there by Thursday afternoon. And then it will run in the paper for three consecutive weeks. We also will have to serve all the adjoining landowners that are there by tax records connecting or touching their property on School Street or Fourth Street as they were proposed. Serve them with a copy of the resolution by registered mail so that they have specific notice of the public hearing and an opportunity to ask questions.
Curiosity, how many people is that going to affect? How many owners, landowners?
It's actually, I think, only two. There is a third one that has already, some way or another, adjusted and has part of Fourth Street in their property there. If you look at the map, Green County owns this and Green County owns this stretch. So it's property owner here and property owner here.
Okay.
Good enough.
Thank you, sir. Last item for action this evening is the revisiting of the proposed incentive and performance bonus policy. This was presented last week to award or reward effort and incentivize those who perform that effort through grants or other meritorious achievement. In the last two weeks, I was to have received any and all input inserted into this policy. And that was completed. Okay. Are there questions I can answer? Or if there are none, I would ask that you approve the policy. I did hear from some employees that they were excited for the opportunity.
Move to approve the incentive and performance bonus policy, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so per se. Aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Madam County Attorney.
No comments.
Commissioner reports and recommendations.
Friends of the Library. Friends of the Library at 6 o'clock Thursday afternoon at the...
City Club.
City Club.
And also the Green County Healthcare, the Sunday at 1:00.
1:00.
On Highway 91 where the old loose lodge was.
Free Union Church is having a barbecue pork lunch this Saturday at 11:01.
That's right. The Maury Ruaking Club is having their barbecue chicken Saturday as well.
Do we have a blood drive tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
Yeah, blood drive is tomorrow. Could you do double? Do one for me, Jacob?
Where's the blood drive at?
Where the...
In the spots near that.
Blood drive?
Yeah.
Right across.
Who spots?
Well...
It's at the wellness center.
Does Free Union have one coming up?
Uh-uh. They'll tell him something. They have one, but it's not... Blood drive, it's a little primary sometime. But they're desperate need of blood, right? Help if you can, if you're able to.
Our attorney, did you say chicken barbecue Saturday at 7:00?
Barbecue.
Barbecue at Free Union Church, barbecue chicken at Maury Ruaking Club, same time Saturday.
Same time.
Yeah.
Not like there is. It is a critical need for blood.
There is.
It is. Be healthy. Might not be healthy the next day, so you might need somebody for that.
Come a day, you gonna need some.
Any other Commissioner reports or recommendations? Otherwise, do I have a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel?
Stay moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor going into closed session signify so per se. Aye. Aye. Those opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. The motion is carried. Those opposed, nay, ayes have it, the motion is carried.